Entertainer motion to come back from recess and re- re short the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we come back into session from recess.
Second?
Second.
That be John Doggett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All city fives saying aye.
Aye.
Both, by unanimous consent, we are back in session. We're against six A, which is emergency services reports, and I think that goes to Mr. Doggett.
Yes, sir. The Summerfield Five District reported the following for September twenty twenty five. Fire related calls twenty-two, EMS related calls sixty, other calls forty-six, for a total of one hundred twenty-eight calls. Child safety seats installed were fifteen. The County Sheriff's Park reported the following for September twenty twenty-five. Calls two-hundred-and-twenty-two, case reports twenty, for a total of two-hundred-and-forty-two. On nine twelve, deputies reported rape and entering of the gas town on US two-twenty, occasioned ransom investigation by the detectives. They took note of all reports throughout the months through residents following victims to phone scams. Subjects claimed to be deputies with the sheriff's office and advisor, who paid money or money in order to take care of warrants for arrests for missing jury duty or other legal processes. Victims then were told by the scammers to make cash deposits into Bitcoin, AGMs at various locations. We'd like to remind the residents that no law enforcement agency will ever contact you, receive your money, or give cards to address any legal processes. If you receive such a call, please hang up on the subjects and call the non-currency number, available next morning, at three-three-six, three-seven-three, twenty-two, twenty-two, and ask to speak to the deputy. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Doggett. Financial reports.
Unless there are any questions, I'm gonna go through an overview in section nine. I don't see them to do it by now.
Ma'am, watch your name.
Sir, my name is Jen Kelly. I'm the finance officer.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll cover it in section nine.
Okay, okay. Uh, any comments on the financial report? Well, wait a minute. Now, where are we? Are we at the financial report?
There's no comments here. She's gonna talk. Remember, we will see.
You have that, right?
Yeah.
All right, board and committee reports.
I have no comments.
No comments?
None? Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna go consent. Uh, approval of the consent agenda, and we have made some changes to that. We have moved seven C to nine E, and we have deleted, uh, we have, uh, deleted the closed session, number eleven. Uh, are there any other changes to the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, number seven.
So we're moving right, seven.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Seven, nine E.
Yeah, that's it.
Right, so, right.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion that we approve the consent agenda. And, um, noted, moving seven C to nine E. Therefore, our consent agenda approval is A, B, and C.
Very good. Is there a second? Second? Who was that? Please play second. Is there any discussion?
I'll just say, um, I don't know if you can go with it, but I do think we should usually have member appointments be separate from now on. So, I'm all about it, but I think in the future, for consent agendas, we should do appointments separate.
But you're okay with tonight?
Yeah.
All those in favor, city fives saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Hearing none, uh, so consent agenda is, is approved with the changes listed by Mayor Protim Devaney. All right. We will go to approval of previous open session meeting minutes from five thirteen, seven twenty-eight, eight nineteen, nine nine, and nine fifteen. Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Okay. Old Business, approval of solid waste RFP, which is, uh, goes to manager Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. As y'all are well aware, I sent house a business plan for considering bringing billing for trash services in-house. We did do an RFP for trash services. I asked for two options, one is to keep direct billing as we currently do it now, and summary billing, bringing that billing in-house. The reason for consideration of bringing that billing in-house was it would qualify as a service under the Little Carolina General Statutes for towns that are incorporated. Thus getting us closer to the goal that you all had communicated you want to get to based on recommendation from Mr. Jason Dillinger and the influence of House Bill Eight oh one. I'm very happy to announce that, um, the bid came in and it was surprising. The summarization, as I sent an email yesterday, is, is that if you decide to go to summary billing, the citizens will save over four dollars per quarter what they're currently paying, and that would also include us paying for the billing. I did a detailed business plan to y'all in depth about how that would work in-house and the staff and, and diverse stuff. Also in that, um, there's a big trend, and I included that in my business plan, with reports and documentation of going to paperless billing. We have a very educated community when it comes to recycling. Um, I got that from numerous carriers, but our current carrier, and so we feel like there's gonna be a big shift from people not wanting to get paper bill mail. I'm actually one of them. I have everything I can have drafted in ACH, and that will save us a dollar forty-four cents every household, every quarter. So, um, the scoring committee was the finance officer, Councilman Clay, and Councilman Hamilton sat with us. We went through all four proposals that we got. We got one from GFL, one from Republic, we're reading, and Liberty. Liberty was disqualified because they didn't follow the instructions in the bid packet. The other three were qualified. However, Republic did get the bid again, so.
What happened to your statement?
Don't matter. So, um, I'm here to recommend to you all that we consider going with Republic, number one. And number two is that we go to summary billing. It will be less cost for the citizens, and it will help qualify for service for, um, House Bill Eight oh one and, and what y'all's goals that you had expressed earlier in the spring. The only thing we have to do tonight is not the rate, but the company, so, and which method, so we can move forward logistically and let that happen January one. So I'll entertain questions at this time.
Do you need a, um, a motion to continue with the Republic service tonight in the absence of an agreement? I don't see it in my packet.
No, sir. We just need a mo- I need a motion to, to authorize me to negotiate an agreement for January one.
Got it.
And which method billing, direct billing, which we're currently doing, and summary billing, those are the industry terms. So the motion would be, uh, hereby make a motion to authorize the town manager to engage in an agreement to renew a contract for January one. That, that contract will come back in front of y'all and to pursue summary billing or direct billing.
Mr. Rollins, how many people, how many companies did you contact, and did everybody respond?
I contacted eight companies. I was very aggressive. Besides our regular advertising, I actually picked up the phone and called companies. I had two companies email me back after I sent invitations saying they weren't gonna bid. We had four bidders, um, first round, which was really good. So we had six people basically communicate that they either were or were gonna bid, and three of them qualified. The scoring, just so, so the rest of the council understands, is you score bids based on qualifications. We, we actually called references for each one of the companies. It was about a three-hour meeting. I think both the council members participated, learned a lot, and it was very beneficial. And I look forward to using some of the rest of you or our other RFPs coming up. So, um, but, uh.
Which you recommended, they were the low bill- Republic was the low bidder, and you recommended.
Yes, sir, and they got the high score according to committee, based on experience references. It just wasn't about price.
So, how many, how many towns our size do you just, uh, summary bill them?
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
How many towns our size do you summary bill them?
I, I mean, there's a lot of towns our size that do it and smaller, but they generally have it lumped in with water and sewer. Like my last town was much smaller than here, um, and we lumped it in with the water and sewer bill. It was a separate contract with GFL in that town, but there's a lot of towns. We're unique in that we don't have a water and sewer system, so we're a stand-love bill. I will, uh, share with you that I talked today with Regional Vice President Republic. I had them pull data, and less than one percent of our people don't pay their trash bill on time. I found that out today. You'll get that exact number if you said that it's less than one percent.
Would you mind so that folks can understand it, the difference between summary?
So direct billing means, just like it is now, the bill goes directly to the customer. Summary billing means we, as a town, send the bills out to the customers. We collect the funds, and we pay the trash hauler. That, uh, there comes the problem.
And we are gonna be able to take credit card, are we gonna take checks? Are we gonna take all forms of payment?
No cash. We don't take any cash.
No cash, but checks?
ACH. If, if y'all decide to go summary billing, we will be able to take checks, credit card payments to ACH.
Do you have a, a method to recommend, whether you want to bid?
Well, if somebody has a bill like ACH, I mean, that's gonna be the best.
And I mean, of the summary, I think.
Oh, absolutely, summary. I mean, I, I'm all about saving the charter, and this counts for a service, and it gets us closer to having those four services. You know, this gets us two, and the next item on the, on the agenda is to talk about a third service. So I'm all about saving the charter. I think this is a way to solidify it. I think it's a win-win win, just because it's less money than citizens are currently paying for the same provider of service.
And the direct billing, uh, what qualifies?
So, it's not qualified.
Do you happen to know, um, what percentage, uh, of the Republic's services currently paperless or digital?
No, sir.
We've requested it, um, but we're waiting on them to give us a accounts receivable report. They said it's delayed because they're wrapping up their first quarter of the fiscal year stuff in the county department.
And they even have a historical, like last year?
I asked that too, but I'm hoping sometime next week they'll have that for you.
Republic is a very big company, I found out, so they have a large, and the request we put in was very finite, so they're having to put people on it. The industry trends, which I sent out in that business report, is that more than eighty percent of people want electronic paperless bills. So if eighty percent of our four thousand houses want to go to paperless, I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, that's.
Savings.
That's, yes, a lot of money, which is savings. It's over three thousand houses at the dollar forty-four piece. That's our cost to do the billing, um, all in. That's a lot of money of savings. Then we can also entice the public, if we do this, to go, go to paperless, go to electronic, drive it, give them a discount, even knock their trash. Sorry, solid waste bill, even down even further.
I wonder if in those, when they did email, a bill emailed to them, if they'll, if we will be able to add into that email any community updates of like events going on, or use that as a form of communication with, uh?
Great question, yes. So, the way the system's set up is when the finance officer print, hits print to print the bills, literally they're gonna go to their printer, and those are paperless, they're gonna get an email simultaneously. We can then have a newsletter attached to that electronic bill, and we also can do a two-page newsletter along with the paper bill, and it will be collated in the same envelope once a quarter. So one of the things that we had talked about at our planning budget retreat, and I heard you back in March, was, hey, we'd like to start doing the newsletter. We'd like to start being more communicative to, to our citizenship. And so this is another habit we need to do that. We're not increasing postage to be in the same envelope. So you can get electronically, or you can get a paper. The system is intuitive enough to do that.
Very nice.
Any other questions? Is there somebody who wants to put forth a motion, or is there a wire or nothing?
You just want a motion to pursue the contract for January?
Yes, sir. In which form of billing?
Well, uh, maybe you should go down and see what folks, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and see which form of billing people want.
Mr. Doggett?
Direct. Uh, summary.
Summary.
Mr. Rollins?
Summary is the one where we do the billing, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, summary.
And I'm gonna say summary too, based on the advice that we were given to, uh, that we paid, paid money for to have somebody come in and talk with us about services that we can offer to save the charter. So I cannot imagine not voting for that unless, uh, we're not trying to save that charter. So I'll do that.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Hamilton, that's a, it's a win-win, uh, reducing, um, the expense to our, our constituents, uh, as well as saving this town by saving the charter. I'm all in for that.
And I'd like to, you know, to do a newsletter.
And a newsletter's made. We could ask and talk to them about it.
All right, so is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we move forward with the, um, with the solid waste arrangement system and choosing, um, Republic and doing the summary billing.
And authorize?
And authorize TWIG to move, so, and authorize the town manager or to move forward with, um, putting contracts together that we, so that we get this up and running January one.
I'll second that.
Second, uh, Mr. Clay, any discussion?
I, I can't vote in favor of the summary billing, um, because HBA Eight oh one is just a study. While they're studying what constitutes a paper town, we need to sit down and formulate a strategic plan with input from all citizens on the services we want to offer the town.
During your, Mr. Doggett? Any other discussion?
I'll make a comment that I feel like this is, um, we're doing this also for the citizens. If we have been able to come back and lower the rate, we need to put that first. We raised taxes. We said we were gonna spend it on certain items. We are moving forward, um, so we need to think about, um, what benefits the citizens as well. And if we can do this, you know, save them money, possibly save them another dollar or something, um, that adds up over time with the, um, getting a discount if you pay here at a time.
Completely agree with you, and we like, we have the building now, whether it be electronic or, or paper, we can provide additional communication, announcements, everything, additional charge. That is an amazing idea.
That creates, um, like, we're pushing the paper to the citizens, so it's an outreach that they need for us.
Well, I agree that Eight oh one, the House Bill Eight oh one, is just a study they'll, they have, Raleigh has already reached out to us asking about what services we provide and wanting details of it. So I think that it's pretty clear that this study really has already started. So, um, I feel very confident that we should go ahead and move forward with adding the services.
And Ms. Robinson, not only have they reached out to us, but they reached out to neighboring towns to find out what services they provide as well. So I agree with you. I think they're already working on the study.
Anybody else? All right, there's a motion and seconded, um, uh, is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to authorize county manager Rollins to, uh, I guess, keep going with Republic and investigate, uh, taking that negotiation further as well as, um, starting the process of initiating summary billing. Have I hit all the points there? All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those ayes.
Aye.
Mr. Doggett, ayes. Uh, motion carries. All right, we're now at Old Business, uh, Eighth Beach, streetlight placement.
Yes, sir. Uh, for my part, this is more of a report on, you know, gathering information, um, as far as streetlights and, and, um, so, as it pans, the House Bill Eight oh one, another way that we looked at low-hanging fruit back in the spring and, um, raising the tax rate to five cents would be to add some street lighting somewhere here in Summerfield, and that, that would count as a service. That's one of the services. So if y'all decide to do that, that would be a third service. Uh, you just prove the second. So, um, I had a meeting today, again, a follow-up meeting with Progress Energy, and, and verified some rates. Now, these rates are only good, uh, now, and they can change them in the future, and that's not pressure tactic, just, it's a caveat. They've not raised them since our last meeting in April. So, um, basically, um, Council, uh, Mayor Protim, Devaney, and I have kicked around a couple of areas to start. I, first of all, I think we can't put up just a couple of streetlights and say we're one and done, and hey, look at us here on assembly, and we need to have a plan going forward. However, that plan has to start sometime. What I found out today is, is that basically, um, a streetlight will cost eighteen hundred dollars one time upfront, and depending on the wattage of the bulb, it's gonna cost fifteen to seventeen dollars per month per pole, or per light. Uh, that, that goes up a little bit with the higher wattage bulbs. The higher the watt, wattage bulbs, the further it will shine. So the maximum bulb at a hundred and fifty watts will shine at a hundred and eighty degrees. So if you can imagine looking at B Council, from your right and your left, your peripherals in front, it would shine a hundred and eighty feet, a hundred and twenty feet out, uh, and fifteen to twenty feet in the rear. The lower the wattage, the less the, the distance that it will shine. Uh, all the lights that they put up are dark-skinned compliant, which would comply with our requirements, and we just basically need to come up with some locations. Now, it's not totally up to this body. Anything I'll look to do, because all our streets are maintained by the Little Carolina Department of Transportation, have to be approved where they're going over their streets. They're really their streets. They're not our streets. And that's a blessing because we won't have to be able to pay it, trust me from my last meeting. But, um, I think there's an opportunity, um, down on Strawberry Road, where the trail goes across there in that area. I heard about one of those this evening. I think there's an opportunity on the southernmost end of Summerfield Road. And one day I came up and just looking, you know, there's probably twelve, fifteen places that are spread out that there's not houses, but on the southern end, one there at the parking lot shining over the road, and then a couple more, you're coming up on the right-hand side going north, or on the left-hand side, you're going south towards two-twenty. So, A is, uh, you know, you've got the price in there, um, is, do you, y'all wanna pick them? Or do you wanna, me to come back as a recommendation and do some places, and then we submit the DOT to see if we've got them approved? And then once they're approved, then I can get, uh, Progress Energy to get them lined up and put up. And if so, how many places do you like for me to look at?
How many do you suggest?
I would suggest a minimum of five. And then have a plan next year, if we look at it next year in the budget, when, when, or when we do our budget retreat, the first of the year, you say, hey, Mr. Town Manager, I want you to look at place five four. Let's look at some other safety places. You know, that we wanna add, um, and just have a plan, not just haphazardly put them all over town. I think it shows the General Assembly we're adding service, and we've got a plan, we're gonna keep doing it. And he, I think you never go wrong when you do things in best intentions for public safety. When you're lighting up dark areas, when you're lighting up dark intersections, uh, anytime you do a decision based on public safety, I, I don't think you can ever go wrong.
And the cost was eighteen dollars a light?
It's eighteen hundred dollars to install it. It's gonna be between fifteen and seventeen dollars per light.
Per what?
Per light.
I forgot.
Mr. Manager, um, that eighteen hundred dollars, was that a light on an existing pole? Or a light and a new pole?
It is a light on an existing pole, so it's an arm, a metal arm with what's called Santa Melon. We have one in the town hall parking lot that's on the wooden pole. We have two lights there. So if you go, I look at them, I think I pointed them out to several of y'all who come by. It's on the wooden pole. We got a nice metal pole. That holds seven thousand dollars in the light.
So some of the locations that you mentioned, like Strawberry Road, I agree with. I don't think it has an existing pole, so if we needed to add a pole that's a seven K addition?
No, sir. That's for metal pole.
I'm sorry?
That's for a metal pole. A metal pole costs seven thousand dollars. Uh, a wooden pole has, an additional pole has no cost to add a pole somewhere that is not light.
So it's eighteen hundred dollars plus. We have to run out of wood pole?
If there's a wood pole there, then you put a wood, wood pole there. So if you don't have a pole where you want a light, it's the same cost as if you have a pole there.
It's no cost.
No cost, okay, okay.
So, um, Mr. Manager, I had a, I had a suggestion. I think we should do, um, one, maybe two lights starting out at where the trail crosses Strawberry Road, which is, um, almost to the intersection of Strawberry Road and Highway two-twenty, and put one on either side of the road, um, for pedestrians that cross, um.
That's, that coverage though, I wouldn't need one on both sides because it goes, what, what do you mean?
It, it, it goes out a hundred, you can't go out a hundred and twenty feet to the right and to the left and then front.
And in front of, so you wouldn't need one on both sides.
One would be sufficient there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then my suggestion, you put one there, and then, um, if you start on Summerfield Road, enter from, um, the south end from two-twenty. And I would suggest putting, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my thought process originally was to put one where the, you come out of the trail, out of the tunnel, and, and where the sidewalk or the trail meets the, um, actual Summerfield Road, you would put one there beside of that sidewalk. So those people would be seen, and then cross the road, and maybe not put one directly across the road, maybe one may towards two-twenty. So that whole intersection is more lighted as people come off of two-twenty and turn onto Summerfield Road, and then go down and put one, two, three. That would be four there, and then the five on Strawberry.
I still think, if you put it at that crossing, would that distance it reach, that one at two-twenty, is already gonna be covered?
I, I agree with, with Councilman Robinson, because it has a hundred and twenty-foot span to the right and left and in front.
I would, yeah, I would think even on the corner, there would still be.
It, it's gonna cover right and left a hundred and twenty feet if we do a hundred-foot pole. Some, let's just say a hundred feet, and then in front, and then if the sidewalks coming up behind them, it's gonna cover about twenty feet back behind the lights, is the way that experts shared with me today.
I'd like to see one at the sidewalk, and then however the other four or three need to be placed. And then I would like to see, um, or have it at least written down that as the greenway goes, is being put in, we want to see and know where there are safety issues. Maybe it's along the tree area where it's really dark, um, and we, the next phase might be add more there. Safety issues as to crossing any of the roads where there's a break in the actual trail, the AMY trail going down Summerfield Road. And I'm looking at this for, like, safety and welfare for citizens.
So can I reiterate?
Yes, please.
So basically, you would like to have one down near Strawberry Road where the trail passes, and then at the sidewalk, and then come up Summerfield Road, and you're going north on the right-hand side, crossing the trail park strategically placed, and then that would, that, that's gonna eat up five. And then when the trail gets in, we take a look next year, and the plan is we take a look next year after the trail gets in. where we have some dark spots and some intersections that we want to add.
That's my suggestion.
What's the, the, what's our budget now?
We, you've approved in the budget ordinance twenty-five thousand.
So why are we going five?
We can do ten. There's enough to do. I originally put money in to do ten, knowing the numbers back in April, those numbers have not changed and we could do ten.
Your original question is some guidance on what do you want to do? Do you want us to make those decisions or do you want us, want you to come back and make recommendations to us? And I think you've already got some recommendations from us. I think you can continue to get recommendations from us and maybe other sources. But I, I would like, personally, I'd like you to come back to us and say, hey, I've got everyone's input and these are the five, eight, ten, whatever, that you're recommending to council for we can give you a thumbs up, thumbs down or make adjustments.
And those, those numbers you gave us of the distances that the light can shine? It can shine, right, but it doesn't have to? So the ones that are on Summerfield Road in the residential area, it can be a much lesser area that's lit up? So their houses are not lit up?
Theoretically, we could do a lower watt bulb close to houses if we have them there and that will decrease the amount being shined. But understand that it's going to go down and out. So if, if, it's, it's meant to be street lighting. So the people behind, I say there were residents behind me, they should have no light intrusion at all unless they're within twenty feet of that pole.
If you're pressing across the street.
Could possibly.
Could possibly.
Yes, ma'am. So, I mean, it's just about strategically placing them. And some people want a street light. I mean, some people actually pay for a light in their backyard. And so I think communicating with that residence, hey, we're looking to put a light up over here. Do you thumbs up for that or?
Communicating with residents, I really like that part.
But we have a lot of dark areas where there's no residents right now currently on Summerfield Road.
I would, I would like to know those options.
I mean, there's some right here on, on this road right here that we could put that would cover Summerfield Road a little bit and the back being back to the school, but it still covers the road and will provide more lighting because that's going to be part of the trail eventually. So come out of the woods there and then turn and go by the school. So I think there's opportunities. There's a lot of opportunities just on Summerfield Road. We haven't even gotten to any intersections, you know, we're big geographically as a, as a town.
I have another, another question and this goes with safety and thinking about where people are walking at night. So it might not necessarily be street lighting and I don't know if you can give some money in the, but line, in that line item on the budget for this or not. But one instance is if you are downstairs in the basement and you walk to the bridge to go to the amphitheater at night, that path is really dark and people do park here and they do walk that way. I know Ms. Jeanette, Ms. Dockery walked that way to, at the end of all of our events. And that's just safety, even if it's something small. Can we include? I know it doesn't count like for eight oh one, but as far as thinking about safety for our citizens, is this a point in time that we can include some areas like that?
If there are not too many, I mean.
Well, that one sticks out in my head. Another one might be looking at areas at Saff where we have kids and ball games and.
We're, we're pretty well lit up at Saff.
I think it's been there at the dark.
The parking lot of the A and Y at the Dog Park will absolutely.
The Dog, the Dog Park, yes, thank you.
Yes, but I think it's something that you can make a motion anytime to add a light anywhere you want, really. Safety concern, I don't think anybody on here is going to object to you putting the lights somewhere if it's a safety concern.
Yeah, I just don't know what budget I can pull from. But anyway, the Dog Park was perfect.
I will tell you, the budget has not got a lot of fat in it. Got a lot of cutting, we were very lean with our recommendations. But you could, you have the power to take money out of that twenty-five thousand and put those two locations hypothetically. Or we can put it on our list for next year to fund streetlights or safety lights in next year's budget.
So we have some options. Even in this current budget year with the twenty-five thousand back at the, like Councilman Robinson and Ms. Devaney saying, is that if the majority of the streetlights, that they identify a couple of safety concerns, we can add that.
Actually, can, if it's part of the A and Y and it's lighting for that, can that be part of the eight oh twenty? Can we? No.
Good stretch, but it's got to be for street lighting.
No, no, I mean, the A and Y grant, the money.
Construction only.
Construction only, okay.
And that's an added service that's really our responsibility, right? Do you, do you need a consensus or everyone's input of the direction you want?
A consensus of what you want me to do? Do you want me to pick them out and bring them back to you next month where I think?
I definitely think you need feedback from everybody.
All right, now let's start down here to Mr. Dogg.
I'd be willing to look at where he comes back with.
Mr. Clay?
Yeah, I, I will give you my input. I think some of it is going to be identical to what others have already said, but I may have some others.
Ms. Devaney?
Everything that I've said thus far, possibly looking at a street light at the end of the Derris Drive where you go to the Dog Park. And then if we could also possibly look at a couple of other safety places for the trail that would not be streetlights.
Ms. Robinson?
I would say yes, please do it and do it quickly.
Yes.
Agree, uh.
Mr. Hamilton?
Same.
There you go.
Is that enough, guidance that you have?
Do I need to ask for a motion here or?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, I think you've been approved of.
So just recap, I'll come back with a recommendation at our regular meeting in November. If you like that recommendation, we'll submit it to DOT for approval for those that are over streets. And DOT is really a formality from what it was explained to me today. Once they come back, then we can give the thumbs up to Duke Energy, thank you. So we may be able to squeeze out more than ten because we only have a half year versus the monthly rent of fifteen dollars. We'll see.
All right, all business taken care of now. I think we're, we're at the quarterly financial update.
I, I just want to do an introduction. That's your, as you're making way, you're. So, so one of the things that, that Mayor and I went to a class a couple of weeks ago. Spent some fall time at the School of Government. The biggest thing facing local government, and I'm keenly aware of this, that's ruling local governments, Winston-Salem School Board, Rocky Mount, Pilot Mountain, and the list just goes on and on, is finances. So one of the things that Jen and I said very keenly is, is watching the hen house, that the hens don't get out. And so we came up with this idea that once a quarter, she's going to come in at the end of the quarter as a finance officer and give you a mobile overview of how we're doing. I don't want.
I love that.
Thank you. I don't, not that we would, but it gives you all that peace of mind and it's only fair to the citizens. I wouldn't want you to be like in Benson where my mentor is. They kept hearing everything's fine, everything's fine, everything's fine. They didn't pay attention to the auditor. And the last report I got, they're over a half million dollars minus in their fund balance. That we're in really good financial shape and I want to stay in really good financial shape. And I think a big part of that is accountability by she and I. And so I wanted you to hear the word horses mouth, how are you doing? How are avenues going? How expensive is it going? How the departments are performing? And give y'all personally the opportunity to ask her questions. So she's going to be here at the end of every quarter. October just finished our first quarter, July, August, September, she'll be back. So later on, so I don't know what's going on with anybody.
So I'm just going to go section by section, just to kind of give you an overview. A lot of things were, we are right on target, so I'm not going to dwell too long. Again, please feel free to, to ask questions, I always appreciate when you do that. So first section, tax revenues. We're exceeding targets for property tax collection, but perco for county, they said there was a, a higher percentage of people that prepaid for the twenty twenty-five tax year and that's why we're a little over target this, at this point in the fiscal year. Sales tax distribution payments are running a little bit behind schedule. Not entirely sure why that is, but I did confirm that with about forty of my peers in our finance officer meeting today at School of Government.
Schedule, schedule meeting in the state getting into our funds?
Correct, they're behind schedule with their dis, this, excuse me, disbursement normally. Like theoretically, we should be getting them every month. Sometimes it comes in a little bit later every two months, sometimes every three months. Oftentimes we get like larger disbursements to make us whole closer to the end of the fiscal year. So I'm not concerned about that not being at twenty-five percent is where I'm living. Apologies, my brain starts to slow down at about seven P M. I've been up since four. So intergovernmental revenues section, for this one, we're largely at the mercy of the distribution schedules that the various entities responsible for providing us with revenue disbursements. Most don't send first quarter disbursements until close to the end of the second quarter. As an example of the types of delays we're experiencing, we didn't receive our final disbursement for last fiscal year from the A B C Board until October eighth, just last week. So just everybody's kind of. Investment earnings, we are exceeding our targets thanks to our new business checking and having an I C S account with the same bank. That makes it much easier to transfer any operating overages out of our checking account and into the I C S account to take advantage of the great interest rate. So right now, we're generating about seven hundred dollars a month for every two hundred thousand we've put into the I C S. So that's why we're a little over target yet. These miscellaneous revenues, they're always highly variable with the exception of our rental income, which is right on target. Grants and intergovernmental transfers will catch up once construction starts on the three day capital budget. Donations and program revenues, another shout out to Jeanette Dockery. We are exceeding targets thanks to all of her hard work. She is locking in donors and we are already receiving checks. So that is wonderful. There is a hundred dollars in there that will, that's going to be moved for one of my budget amendments coming up soon. One of our regulars at the Dog Park was inspired to donate a hundred dollars to help with future enhancements and dog park initiatives. So that hundred dollars, once that moves into the restricted donations fund, that's going to drop percentage of budget from seventy-three to sixty-six percent in that section. As we all know, Founder's Day revenues don't usually start coming in until quarter three, sometime in January or March. So nothing to worry about there. Parks and Rec program revenues. So the athletic park rental fees, it's important to note that an additional seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars is invoiced but hasn't yet been received as a nine thirty. So that puts us closer to the twenty-three point eight-two percent, which is right on target for the end of quarter one. So it's just not reflected there because we haven't collected it yet. The intersection revenue for September was received a little bit late on the seventh of October. So we're closer to about twenty percent because we just received an additional one thousand five hundred and fifteen that wasn't included in this nine thirty. Governing body personnel expenses are right on track. Majority of the other expenses are one time annual fees that, or services that are billed at various quarters. Capital has a pending successful function of this unit of equipment, but where these expenses are really. Professional services, legal firms we have worked with in previous fiscal years have started charging us for the required fiscal year audit and comparison letters. So that's why you'll see a hundred and thirty-five dollar charge already appearing in that area yet. Our auditors scheduled to come on the twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth of this month to do our previous fiscal year audit. We are kind of overspend this quarter with legal fees due to the various cases that are ongoing and we may need to reassess this line minimum in the near future. Administration personnel expenses are right on target. Happy release and maintenance, the cost of red, for color and black and white has increased since July twenty twenty-five. This was not announced in advance of that timeframe. So my recommendation would be if we could consider transitioning to digital or payable packets for our future council meetings, we'd save a substantial amount of money and not have to increase that line. Telephones are actually at two thousand two fifty-eight, which is forty-one percent. That's due to implementing a new phone system and an error I made assigning the I D phones to the internet line. So I had to add an additional five hundred and sixty-three with the general ledger. Correcting that error updated the internet expenses from one thousand one sixty-three, which was forty-six point five three percent. Put it back down to six hundred, which is right on target at twenty-four percent. Information technology expenses are slightly over target for the quarter. Here's some unexpected issues with a D P P R account home. This should level up for next quarter. Training education is over target due to my pursuit of my finance officer certification and the scheduling of those. Most of those classes have been occurring over the first quarter of this fiscal year. So it's kind of front loading all of my approved training. Purdeem and travel savings have been achieved by, I took advantage too of the classes that were invented in person. Were recently offered as online options, so I went ahead and opted for that. So we saved ourselves several hundred dollars by avoiding hotels. Administration miscellaneous expense, that's expected as needed and that's variable every year. Public records archiving is a one time annual payment. The miscellaneous finance charges, so these expenses are a little bit higher because we're still transitioning from our old bank, which is still pending a couple of outstanding checks that I'm chasing down. But that's an additional fifty-five dollars with fees from Truist. At the same time, we are taking on the fees, which are directly a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month at First National Bank because we have added the extra security features. So there's positive pay, which prevents any legitimate checks, so we cashed more than one time, which was a problem that we were having at Truist previously. So this eliminates that and if for some reason that goes through, First National Bank is responsible to refund us a hundred percent. The other safety feature, now that safety feature costs about a hundred and eighty dollars a month at Truist. First National Bank, all of our account maintenance fees and these two additional security features, about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, which is a little bit higher than we budgeted for. We have two options. In order to eliminate any banking fees, we would have to maintain an average daily balance in that business checking account of three hundred thousand dollars. I recommend that we opt to keep the average daily balance at a hundred thousand dollars only and then transfer that extra two hundred thousand into our I C S account. Because again, a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, an extra five hundred, seven hundred dollars per month in interest that we're generating by moving that over into the I C S rather than the normal account. So that one would cover the hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Do you have any questions about that? We haven't started the website redesign project, that's another headache. Planning Department, personnel expenses are right on track. Operating expenses are reflecting more conservative spending by staff this quarter. We are making strong progress on comprehensive plan updates and store water services as indicated in the town engineering line, that's why we are a little bit higher than twenty-five percent at this point. Public property buildings, AKA the maintenance department. There is a correction to note in repairs, maintenance and contracts. The current report reflects a duplicate payment of our town credit card. So there's an extra eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty cents in there that has been refunded not twice on October second. So if you remove that, the aggregate total spent in quarter one is four thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, which is eleven point five three percent, instead of going to be two point nine five that's reflected on that report. And we have resolved that, it was a glitch of the auto draft. And we have resolved that it was a glitch of auto draft. All other operating expenses are on track for the quarter. Capital outlay and spending started construction for the water tower and the final designs to import with the town sign purchase. Planning board and board adjustment expenses are pending scheduling of the additional training sessions they are in fiscal year. Parks and Rec personnel is slightly below target, because we lost a full-time staff member for the month of September. Operating expenses are right on target. Capital outlay is pending started construction for the Derris and A and Y. Non-grant funded park improvement projects are planned for after peak athletic season in quarters two and three. Okay, was that everything? No. Oh, sorry. I lost my place. Community events are on target, are on target for recurring events and will adjust as events complete throughout the calendar year. Public services, animal control, shelter, fire inspections, and senior programs are all on target. Streetlights project hasn't started yet, but we're making some progress. Trash service billing, I can go ahead and give the go-ahead to Black Mountain to cash the check back, five thousand eight hundred forty dollars in that line. It was for the implementation fee of the utility building's locker. And public safety service total, that's twelve thousand five hundred is really for the service matrix expense. And there's a budget amendment for that coming up next. And no expenses have been submitted to date for trails and open space or historical communities. Were there any questions? I was, I was not, sorry, you guys are going to have a lot to say.
May I, a hundred dollar donation to the dog park. I mean, just sort of throw that to Jen just for the.
No, I, I have a, that's great for me now. I have a budget amendment to create a restrictive donation.
Okay, is that going to be ongoing that, for, for future donations coming into the dog park?
Yeah, it's, it's basically until it's expended. So I'll have to get with our park director, who's probably kind of find out what his plans are.
I wonder if we can put like plaques out, if somebody wants to put a plaque up for their dead dog or something like that.
Sure.
They don't need money or something like that.
Well, and I emailed the donor to ask if she has any references. I was just waiting to hear back from her.
Yeah, in honor of.
Maybe we go towards a safety light here?
Yeah. Yeah.
If you have some more license.
That's what, that's what I'm talking about. You say that so much. That's everything.
The paw, paw, what do you call? Like a paw walk. So you could set up concrete stone and have.
Now, that's something I'd be honest.
That's very cute. Well, let's get back to it.
I'll let you tell it, credit.
This is really good. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And I think next, I'm sorry, I have tabs here. So the policy updates, just kind of get an overview. There are a few statutory updates that require some changes to these policies. So we'll cover internal controls and risk assessment first. That cover page kind of goes over everything that was changed. So I updated the general statute. They moved that. It's not one, it's outlined there. So that was outlined in the policy. I included that the LGC, or Local Government Commission, is authorized under General Statute one by nine to regulate required modifications to internal control procedures. I had it included previously. And I also added the periodic requirements and the relevant statute one by nine dash two eight that mandate budget verification and certification before financial applications. It hadn't been in that policy before. Also, in the draft of the policy that I included, I highlighted every single trade I made in yellow. So it was easily flagged. Absolutely. And then I included that finance officers must be bonded. I included the general statute that was applicable here and that there is a minimum individual surety bond requirement for a finance officer of fifty thousand dollars. Under the governance oversight, I recommended that the governing board review the internal control of that business on a quarterly basis, just as an extra layer of oversight and investment. And LGC oversight is formally recognized in this policy now. It wasn't reflected previously. Risk assessment enhancements. Annual risk assessment review is now required. So we can make a point in our next budget for cheap to include looking over our risk. New risk categories include cybersecurity with the positive pay and E C H of security levels, vendor fraud, and brick compliance. Control activities, modernization, controls for electronic fund transfers and A C H payments is now included, as well as with our town credit cards, our high-risk banking speed cards, what we call them, kind of the safe local. And multi-factor authentication is now required for all kinds of things. So that protects us better from cybersecurity. Training and education, annual internal control training is required for finance staff and collective officials. Use of U S School of Government L C, L G C resources encouraged. And for technology and data security, regular penetration testing and cloud backup verification is required and incident response protocols established. All of these things are happening currently with our IT provider. Okay, and do you have any questions about those changes? Pretty standard. Same thing for our cash management policy. Hang on a second. Okay, so I don't know where. I think I started out of order, I was.
Mr. Manager, what, she's checking on that. May I ask a question? Do we need to make a motion tonight and that we approve these changes for these policies?
It is recommended by the finance officer.
And as single or incoming as combined or individual?
Probably individual, because you want two different policies.
Thank you.
On that policy, you can do that right now.
Oh, no, good, good.
Oh, okay. Cash management, there are just a couple of statutory changes that needed to be reflected. They're outlined on the final page of the draft. So on page three, section four, paragraph three, I removed the eligibility of the town hiring brokers to sell or purchase securities on behalf of the finance officer, because this is now only allowable with special legislative, legislative authority, which is now does not happen. Second change, page six, bullet one, I added in the hyperlink directly to the N C State Treasurer website that contains a list of institutions operating under the pooled method of collateralization. On page six, I had to add a second bullet to designate the Bank of Oak Ridge as they are, they no longer operate under the pooling method of collateralization and no longer appear on that list. So I had to specifically name them as an official depository for the town, because we do have a depository account with that institution. So now recovered. And then page seven, I added a current summary of investments as of June thirty twenty twenty-five. Those are the policies. Do you mind, Councilperson Hamilton, if I take D instead of E to cover the budget amendments?
Yeah, I mean, okay.
What are we doing here now? You're doing.
Do you want to go ahead and pass those policies? You're going to make a motion to finish off the, make a motion that we approve the cash management investment policy? Is there?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All right, the motion is to accept the finance officer's cash management and investment policy as a witness. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?